The St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, May 24th, 2017. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
I move the board adjourned into executive session for the purpose of personnel, collective bargaining are legal, property acquisition issues, and student issues under Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A, 1, 2, 6, and 10.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Back in an hour. All right, I'd like to re-convene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, May 24th, 2017. We are going to begin with Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Four reports.
So, this weekend, I attended a concert headed by the Chamber Orchestra of Southern Maryland in concert. So, it's just called Cosmic for short. And there were a lot of high school students, some graduating seniors, who take part in Cosmic. And Cosmic is a full orchestra, so there's a string section and there's a band section. And it was a phenomenal concert. They played at a nearby church up near Solomon's Island, and then closer to Prince Frederick was another concert. And they played very high-level music, including one of Tchaikovsky's songs, which is a very hard piece to do. And I was talking to some of the high schoolers afterwards, and they were really excited about Cosmic, not just because it's an adult and kid orchestra, it's for students and adults, but also just because they like that it's a continuation of the arts that they do in school, especially because now there are like, there are fewer options with, in terms of tri-county and all-county. So, it was a great way to see students do something that they love. And even though that they said after the concert that they were very tired, they were very excited that the audience loved what they performed.
I attended the Great Mills High School Naval Junior ROTC Change of Command and Award Ceremony. The award ceremony was really neat. People from within the community gave the cadets or students different types of awards, and they were presented from the American Legion, from the naval officers, the veteran riders, motorcycle riders. So, but each one of them had a criteria for the students, whether it was based on character, their volunteerism, academics, physical fitness. Sometimes it was a combination of criteria. So, it was really neat to see that, you know, these students being recognized for their hard work. Also, the change of command, that was very interesting. So, they have some students, whether they're the secretary, or the historian, or the, you know, the commander for the junior ROTC. What they do is they bring over the flag, and all the students that are for the, graduating for the 2018 year come and now take the place of the students that are graduating. So, it was really neat. It was packed, a lot of parents there, and also people from within the community, so.
Madam Chair, am I limited to three minutes? Can I spend a half an hour?
No, spend a half an hour.
I'll take three minutes.
We're just taking our little time.
The, one of the more interesting visits I had was the St. Mary's County Historical Society Dinner last week. We usually have, we always have very interesting speakers. Last week, our speakers were former House of Delegates Johnny Wood and past county commissioner, President Tommy McKay. And they were talking about life in the county in 30, 40 years ago, and that the center of commerce, so to speak, were the grocery stores, both of them own grocery stores. So, they spent probably about an hour, or about a half an hour, talking about the interaction of all the folks, and it was sort of a meeting place to get information. And I thought that was very, very interesting comments about some of the anecdotal stories that they had to tell about. You didn't get your information from the enterprise or from the newspapers, you got it from the grocer. And they talked at some length about how they helped folks. A lot of people didn't have money for food, and that the grocers, if you will, were sort of the de facto bankers of the community. So, I thought that was quite interesting. Also, I attended some of the same things that the other board members attended, the Fair Lead Academy graduation, law enforcement, appreciation luncheon that we had, and that's about it for me.
Brady, was that good?
That was good, yeah, I was fine with it.
Brady is our clock media. I'm gonna just, I'm gonna kind of just expound on Mr. Davis, the Fair Lead Academy culmination ceremony last week. It is just amazing at some of the challenges that these students go through and their dedication to get their high school diploma, and the dedication of the teachers and staff is just phenomenal. It was very special. You could see the, you know, the emotion on some of their parents' faces, and as you talk to some of them, they never expected their child to walk across the graduation stage, you know, for any number of reasons. The children and the students who spoke at the ceremony were excellent. They did a fabulous job. I can't say enough about that program and the ability, and I really hope at some point we can extend it to eighth grade and, you know, feed it in. And I think, I know Dr. Montgomery tweeted a picture out of all of the students at the end. If anyone ever questioned whether or not that group was truly a family, that picture definitely put any of your worries to rest. So, congratulations to them and to all of our graduates. Graduation season is upon us, it's all next week. So, good luck to everyone, don't trip across the stage, and stay safe. And I'll probably be the one that trips, just so you know. Go ahead, Mrs. Washington.
This is the time of celebrations and many recognition ceremonies. So, the board members have been busy all over the county going to many events, trying to spread ourselves out the cover as many events as possible, and there are so many. Diner Elementary School had their third annual STEM Career Day. St. Mary's College had their commencement. Many of our students graduate from St. Mary's College, and many of them come here to work as teachers. Becker had their scholarship fair at the Forest Center, and St. Mary's County Public Schools had recognition for educational support professionals, Teacher of the Year, and Principal of the Year. Fair Lead Academy had the culminating exercise, which was wonderful, and it was a lot of love, a lot of tears, and a lot of hugs shared at that event. United Way of St. Mary's was thankful for the contributions that our employees make through payroll deductions to support many of their programs, such as the Snack Pack Program, which is very, which is a very good program. The National Academy of Finance had their completion ceremony. Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center commencement. And I'll tell you about the highlight, the Diner Career Day STEM, and we start early in elementary school. NCIS from Pax River Crime Lab came, they showed the students how to do mold impressions, they taught, showed them how to do fingerprinting, how to lift a mark, and they bought a polygraph machine to show the students how this is used to help solve cases. The deputy fire marshal came, he bought two types of dog, the accelerant detection canine dog and explosive detection canine dog. These dogs and their handlers are trained for six weeks at Front Royal in Virginia, and they stay in a hotel with their owner. And when the dog is 10 years old, the dog retires, and the owner can keep the dog at their own expense. And they're trying to get legislation through that the state will pay for the medical expenses and the food for the dogs, because after 10 years of service, the dog is on the expense of the owner. And they talked about the dogs, how they go in after a fire, and then they sniff it out, they cut that part of the building out, take it to the lab, and determine what was the cause of the fire. Chesapeake Bay Biological Lab brought in Atlantic sturgeon fish, which is endangered, and told the students about how they want to protect that. Then the Calvert search team came in, and one of our teachers is a volunteer, Kelly Burkhardt, and she has a dog called Saber, he's five years old. He's nationally certified to find missing people. So, we thank her for doing that. Those are bloodhounds. There was a drone demonstration, B-bots, Great Mills High School students and the ROTC and STEM program bought B-bots. The Calvert Marine Museum had a paleontologist who brought in the shark's tooth of a 50-foot shark, and the students were very impressed with that. Mr. Tyson, who is a retired Navy chief, brought in parachute packs, and he talked to the students about the ejection seat, and under the ejection seat is a life raft. Who would have thought something so big could be under the ejection seat? So, the students really loved that. Diner has an outdoor amphitheater with outdoor learning center, and the students made a zip line and put a figurine on it for it to, and make sure it didn't fall off, to travel down the zip line. So, I thank the community for coming in to expose our students at a young age of career opportunities, because our students, and I've visited enough schools to know, that when I ask them, what do they want to do when they grow up, they can tell you. They say, I want to be an archaeologist, I want to be a veterinarian, I want to be a paleontologist, I want to be a teacher, I want to be a superintendent. So, as so many, our students know what they want to be at an early age. Oh, and they also have a vegetable garden at Diner.
You're gonna, you're gonna get read on.
Well, you know, you say you only talk, but everybody do what they want to do, and I played by the rules and talked about one thing for years. The vegetable garden at Diner is, has lettuce, beets, tomatoes, basils, peppers, carrots, cantaloupes, and watermelons, and it is a wonderful raised bed garden, and they are helped with that by Elms, the Forest Center, and our case students. So, wonderful things are happening in our students, and I appreciate all the volunteers, the teachers, the parents, and all the community members who help our students develop into responsible citizens who have a plan for what they want to do with their future. Thank you.
Mrs. Allen?
I attended the Spring Games for Special Olympics that was held at Leonardtown High School. The dedication of the volunteers involved and the passion of those volunteers and the students and the best buddies who are there with them is just a sight to behold, and the excitement of the students as they participate is so much fun to watch and to experience. It was a beautiful day. I'm grateful that they were able to postpone it from the original date, which would have been a rainy mess. And congratulations to Mr. Rayly at Leonardtown High School, who really takes the, takes the, takes charge and gets everything set up, but he would be the first to tell you that he can't do it and doesn't do it alone. But I appreciate the precision with which it all goes forward, and it really was great fun. And so, and congratulations to the Beccas, the folks at Becca, who handed out local money, well over $200,000 in scholarships to deserving students. That was also a really exciting thing, so. Well done.
It is indeed a joyful time of year across St. Mary's County public schools. We have all of the culminating events and all of the celebrations and all of the recognitions. And in the middle of all that, we also have Ms. Congar, what else do we have during May?
We have, what else do we have during?
We have, we have testing. We have a test. We actually have that academic component where our kids demonstrate not only that they can enjoy themselves, but they have accomplished incredible things, they really. So, it is, you know, it's, it's, it can be, it's a very joyful time, it can also be a very stressful time for students, but we are drawing to a close a really successful year. We spent a great deal of time together as a board this, in the month of May, which is always a lot of fun. I mean, it really is great to see all of the wonderful things that our students and people who work with our students are doing. One thing that's apart from that is on last Friday, we had Leadership Maryland. They culminate their year by taking a look at educational topics, and we have been selected as the, as kind of the host site for that conversation for the last several years. So, we did host Leadership Maryland at the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center on Friday, and these are, these are leaders from across the state of Maryland, and they gather together, and, and we do, we take the opportunity to brag about St. Mary's County Public Schools specifically. We talk about how great it is to live and work and learn in St. Mary's. We take them on a tour of the tech center, and we show them all of the programs, and we talk about this is where learning goes to work. We highlight the wonderful accomplishments of our staff, and I specifically want to highlight Ms. Anna Jones, who is an IRT at Diner Elementary School. And this, she, she presented a lesson to all of these very important business leaders from across the state of Maryland, third-grade lesson, Rolling Through the Fables, where she demonstrates how they incorporate next-generation science standards and the Maryland College and Career Writing Standards for Literacy, Learning, and Reading, and blends them together into this fantastic, interactive opportunity for kids to deconstruct fables and understand supporting details, as well as demonstrate physics lessons with force and unequal force and, and put it all together in roller coasters. And at the end of it, the participants, the third graders, build roller coasters while we gave them that same opportunity. Ms. Jones brought in cardboard and the tubing and the marbles, and here are these people who are leading large companies and overseeing thousands of people, and they are falling to this work, and they are, they are really understanding how St. Mary's County particularly engages kids in learning. And the wonderful part about all of this is they had, they had a very enjoyable time going through the whole process, but then Ms. Jones at the end showed them how they did pre-assessment of the understanding of the physics concepts before they started, and a post-assessment, and they almost doubled their learning through this process, and moreover, they retained their learning, because she went back and interviewed a couple of the students, and she actually played the videos for them, five weeks after the lesson, and they were able to talk to her about balanced force and unequal force and all of these things, third graders. It was really great, and I think that that's, I hope we continue to have that relationship with Leadership Maryland, because I know that when we bring people down and we show them St. Mary's County, it is, it's such a fantastic public relations event, because we do have such a joyful month of May where we are culminating all of those things. So, we've been very busy. We will be even more busy this evening. We're going to be recognizing well over 100 students for their incredible accomplishments at Chopticon High School. Chopticon High School, which has played host to our employee recognition last week. A lot of focus is on our high schools. All of our seniors are pretty much done with their academic work, and now they fall into the incredibly important practice of being able to rise on cue and to walk successfully across the stage, shake the hand of the principal, and hold a diploma just at the right angle to get that memorable photograph. It does take three days of practice. Brilliant calculus-level kids, but it will be, it will be incredible. We'll probably see well over 1,100 kids walk across the stage, and it is indeed my very favorite time of year. So, with that, I look forward to probably spending a great deal of time with you over the next several days and weeks, and seeing kids starting the next phase of their lives, and they are well-prepared to do so. Thank you.
Okay. Public comment? Any?
Anyway, just raise your hand.
Scott, even whenever his time, he'd be stuck.
I did, I did not. You would have timed me, wasn't, I was under three.
She was so interested in what we were saying.
Yeah, she were very, very close.
She was so interested.
Okay. Embroiled?
I need to gouge her if you go over. What we were saying, she just forgot all about it.
Some of that engagement.
Okay, all right, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let's see. Mr. Smith and Ms. McCourt?
And so, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna stay right here, so that I have a microphone right in front of me, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on Ms. McCourt to present with great engagement our final 2018 budget.
Good morning.
So, we shouldn't be presenting any new news to you, this is just formality for the adoption purposes. So, the big picture on the revenue side, the current budget is $207.9 million. The recommended budget for FYE 2018 is $210.3 million, which represents a $2.3 million increase over the current year, or 1.15% increase over the current fiscal year. On the expenditure side, I apologize, there is a typo under fixed charges that should be $49.6 million, bringing your total for 2018 down to $210.3 million. The budget highlights include the negotiated step increase, two additional 10-month psychologists, 11 paraeducators, eight classroom teachers, one ESOL teacher, four additional charter school FTEs, one teacher support IRT, one teacher and one para for the Compass Program, one bus driver, and one bus attendant, two building service workers, two safety and security workers, and one HVAC mechanic. So, at this time, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
Roma, do you have any questions? Mrs. Weaver?
No, because you've been keeping us updated all along, so, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
No, thank you.
I have nothing, thank you very much.
Thank you, great work.
As Mrs. Weaver said, really appreciate all the updates you've given us all along, so. That being said, I have no questions.
Do I have a motion on this afternoon, ma'am?
I move that the Board of Education approve the fiscal year 2018 operating budget as presented and forward to the county commissioners of St. Mary's County for their review and approval.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Howard, the sonic wall.
And Mr. Jason Pridgen.
It sounds so cool, it really does.
It sounds like we're having lunch down in the park. We should have Sonic Burgers together, sonic wall.
Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
I brought with me today Mr. Jason Pridgen. He's our expert in the sonic wall and many other things, as Scott Smith and many of you already know. So, today, what is a firewall? A firewall is a network security system that monitors and controls incoming and outgoing network traffic based on predetermined security rules. The sonic wall firewall allows us to prevent dangerous content and malware from reaching staff and student devices connected to our network. And the background right here is, we took a sample, and I made a quick edit on this version. This actually shows a sample month, and this actually is over a 24-hour period, so when you see the chart, I'll let Jason explain a little bit more about the inbound and outbound.
So, on this chart, you'll see that, obviously, we had peaks during the day with bandwidth, we need to make sure that we accommodate for the peaks, not just the average. On this graph, you'll see that this is an average show, the peaks go around 600 megabits, but the actual peak that we're using during the day is our full 1 gigabit bandwidth currently. And so, the red is, are receiving, so that's everything that people are downloading, when they're watching videos, and then the blue is showing outbound traffic, so that's people viewing our website and that kind of thing. So, as you can see daily, we're using all of our bandwidth, and that limits how much people can do, and teachers learn like, oh, I tried to watch this video, it didn't work, so they just kind of know like, oh, well, I'm not gonna try it this time. So, increasing our bandwidth will help with that kind of things, and teachers will be able to confidently go into the classroom and know, I'm gonna play this video, and it's gonna work. So, that's what we're hoping to do with an increased bandwidth.
Can I ask a question now?
Sure. On this slide, you can see how we've increased our bandwidth over the last five years, and every time we increase it, it's always used up right away. As soon as teachers find out they're watching videos, they're, you know, using the technology to help instruct the students, and so this year, we're hoping to get to 4 gigabits, which would be four times our current bandwidth, and we expect that once we, we were able to get that, it'll be used immediately as soon as teachers realize, oh, this stuff works now, I'm gonna start watching these videos, and all that good stuff.
And many of today's applications are dependent upon higher bandwidth capacity. We're getting requests, we're looking, reviewing like Google Classroom, anything in the cloud that requires a lot of content. So, we have to really, you know, balance to make sure we can do our core business. More and more applications are even going to the web. DocStar was approved recently, so that's gonna be hosted, so we need to make sure that we have enough bandwidth for us to do our core business apps. So, we are using a blended of on-campus and cloud-based applications, and like I said, we review this, we try to make sure that, you know, before we go into another contract with somebody that's gonna change something drastically, we want to make sure we can support it. And as our bandwidth goes up, we really need to make sure that the firewall can handle the additional bandwidth and additional devices. So, to meet the current and future needs of internet services, we've got to always go through and look at our bandwidth capacity, and, you know, some of the, some of the vendors are a little bit more likely to give that information than others, but, you know, as we go along, that's always gonna be part of our review process. Jason, we'll talk about this.
All right, so on this slide, it looks very complicated. This is the proposed solution that Dell's on was come back to us and told us, if you want to do 4 gigabits of internet, this is what you need to do. What we really liked about this solution is, on the top here, you'll see two superfast 9,400 firewalls, and those two are two that we currently have in place. So, as part of this proposed solution, we're reusing what we already have, and we're adding to that to increase our bandwidth, but saving us some money versus switching to a new system where we get to replace everything, so.
And worked, I worked with, Vicki's not here today, but we worked with the purchasing office, and we've been looking at best contract vehicles for some of these networking security proposals, and there is a national cooperative purchasing alliance, and Dell has a contract vehicle with them. The pricing came back in a really, we did comparisons with other vendors, that other school systems are working, and this by far was one that's gonna be more sustainable for our budget right now. And it's also in the lines of what we were planning for as we expand. So, you know, the information here, we looked at, you know, it's a piggyback contract, but we've been working, Jason, myself, and some other team members, for like the last eight months, planning on our next upgrade for internet. So, you know, there's been a number of discussions and reviews that went along with this. And we're here for any extra questions, but right now, we ask for the board's approval to approve this agenda item as presented.
I have one question. Do you anticipate in future years having to increase even more? Because you said every year when you increase the bandwidth.
Yeah, we certainly do. Going from 1 gigabits to 4 gigabits, we're gonna hope to do that, and if we're able to do that, we'll look and see where we're at next year as far as usage and plan from there, whether or not we need to increase. The nice thing about this solution is that, once this solution is in place, adding to it is a lot easier, and we can add one firewall at a time to increase. firewall at a time to increase our bandwidth. We're about 2 gigabits for each one that we add to it.
Thank you.
So the biggest thing to realize here is that in 2015, we did all of our internet traffic on 400 megabits.
Correct.
We're talking about going to 4 gigabits, so that's 4,000, so 10 times the traffic capacity is what we're shooting for.
That's correct.
Okay. Can you go to the slide where it says background?
Yep.
No, I'm sorry, the one before. Okay. So it says May 16th, and you have all the red compared like to the other...
Park test.
Oh, is that what it is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. 'Cause I was like, all of a sudden, there's this big change.
Yeah.
So the red is the, um, how much we're downloading, and the blue is how much we're uploading. So the blue pretty much indicates people that are visiting our website from outside of our network. So we're uploading data to them. The red is indicating all of our usage on our network, where we're downloading videos and that kind of thing.
Okay. And then go to the, um, the proposed design of the upgrade. Why does it say bypass port channel two, and then, like, I don't understand that.
So the way they have set this design up is it's designed in such a way that we can hook everything up and continue our normal traffic. And then, once we're ready to switch to the new solution, basically put the switch, and then we do that, and then be on the new solution that'll increase our bandwidth. So that'll leave us running the whole time while we're trying to put this into place.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
The only questions I have relate to the effectiveness of your firewall now. The new design, your upgrades that you're proposing, do you feel confident that you'll be able to protect the system from malware?
Do you want to tell me about the WannaCry?
Yeah, we do. As you may have heard, a couple weeks ago, there was a pretty prolific virus called the WannaCry ransomware virus.
Right.
And our Sonic Wall firewall had signatures in place in April to protect us from that virus. So a month before it came out, we were already protected. So we're pretty confident with Sonic Wall and how they protect our network in the past and going forward.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Very good.
The increased bandwidth increases our teaching and learning, and this result in increased student achievement. In order to do this, we have to increase the bandwidth firewall. Thank you.
Mrs. Howard?
And it's, you know, we have ramped up to this incrementally in our usage. When you consider that in the years that you were showing us, we were moving into the park testing and how much heavier that was. But also, the, over the years, as we have increased the number of whiteboards, smartboards, Promethean boards in place in the classrooms, and the professional development that the teachers have perceived, so that they're using that system much more effectively, and I think it's not at all surprising. So when we talk about videos that are being watched, they're instructional videos, and it's giving students the opportunity to be outside of the classroom while sitting in the classroom and experience a great many things. So it is where we are, and I would imagine that over the coming years, we'll continue to have to address the bandwidth to be able to continue an effective learning program. So thanks for bringing this forward, and also doing it in a way where we are not having to get rid of everything, that we're able to build on what we have rather than starting over. Very forward-thinking. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's all.
All right. I have a motion for this recommended action item.
I move that the board approve the purchase of Dell Sonic Wall and associated software, equipment, and services from Dell using a National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance contract number 01-42 at a total cost of $100,188.77.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Still one more, one more, one more group of textbooks, right?
Yay.
Yay. Cannot let the primary language arts people sit down.
Right.
You can sit down over here. Right, so you might have put the... Thank you. Okay, well, good morning.
Good morning.
I am very excited today to be able to share with you the recommendation of the Primary Textbook Adoption Committee for kindergarten, first, and second grade for language arts. I wanted to start by going over kind of the history. In 2005 was the time when kindergarten through fifth grade was adopted by, we adopted Hoot and Mifflin as a district. That was our core reading program. And we had additional purchases for Hoot and Mifflin when Evergreen came on board, and then when Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School came on board. And now we're looking at a May adoption for kindergarten through second grade to bring our primary up to speed. Because really, the only school that has materials that align with the Common Core standards is Duke at this time in kindergarten through second grade. So it's been 12 years since they've adopted new materials, and when you have books every day in hands of those little people, they get worn very, very quickly. And so we definitely need to do some replacing. Also, some of the stories and textings that, like in Time Life, those type of things, they need to be updated. And so our children are getting some current nonfiction material as well. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about our textbook adoption process. We held many meetings. We started in February, and we were lucky to get almost 40, about 40 people on our committee. We had teachers representing kindergarten, first grade, second grade, special ed. We had IRTs, parents, administrators, and we had one community member who's part of the dyslexia workforce who has also served on the committee. So it's a very well-rounded group. We started meeting in February, and our first meeting, we sat in like kind of common teams, like first grade, second grade, third grade administrators, parents. And we kind of thought, what do we really want for a reading program for St. Mary's County? Kind of starting from the beginning. What are, we must have, whatever we adopt, we must have these items in it. We did big charts, and then we put them up, and everybody did a gallery walk, and we found that we had very commonalities that we all wanted in a program, which was really good to see. Then again, in February, we met, and then at the next meeting, what we did is we looked at what evaluation tool could we develop, looking at those priorities that we set, to review any materials that we look at, and what are some of the vendors out there that we wanted to review and see. We came up with about 10 different companies' products that we wanted to take a look at, and we developed basically an evaluation tool, which was a rubric that we used through the process. So I think everybody felt good. We did those. It took, we met from 4:30 to 6:30 a couple nights, but it was a really good process, and I think it laid the groundwork for our committee to move on. Then in March, what we did is we had all those materials that we asked for sent to us, and we set them up in displays, and we made vertical teams. So we had a kindergarten, first grade, second grade, parent administrator on each team, and they went around and reviewed the materials and completed that evaluation tool as a team to see if it met the criteria that we were looking at. Out of the 10 through this process, it took us several nights, we weeded it down to four that we were really interested in. So during the month of April, and also May 2nd was our last vendor, we met basically every Tuesday, and a different vendor came and presented the materials. Teachers were given bags full of products, and we spent a couple hours each night just listening to the vendors about what they felt, you know, was good about their program and its implementation. At the end of each of those nights, each individual person then completed that tool on that vendor's product. So when we finished the process, it was very clear... Oh, I wanted to show this first. This is the organizational structure, the different components that we used in the rubric that we developed. And there's different things that we looked at for the different structures. Organization and structure were basically the visual elements, the layout, the quality, the durability, and accessibility. The content was, of course, the rigor and balance of genre, with those current research-based, engaging, the alignment to the Common Core, as well as the 21st century skills. And then the differentiation piece for us for the primary, we really wanted a variety of topics, student choice, differentiation, but also to reflect the sensitivity of student differences. We felt like the little ones really needed that. So we were happy with our tool, and this shows kind of our committee at work. This is a team sitting there looking at the review materials, and the graph shows you kind of the dispersment of committee members. And at the bottom shows a vendor presentation, and that's actually Kathy Baumgartner presenting Wonders to the group, and she's one of the authors of the Wonders series. As a result of all this work, the committee recommended through their individual, and we did a final survey as far as what was your first, second, and third preference, the program, Wonders from McGraw-Hill, it had 68.8% was their first choice, and then when you added first and second choice, 97% of the committee chose that text. So you're very comfortable with the selection. So looking at the actual materials, when you look at kindergarten, first, and second, kindergarten and first grade has both big books and little books, and the big books are wonderful. I brought one here. This is a first grade book. This is when you get into the fun of the whole thing. And the illustrations are gorgeous, very engaging. Kindergarten actually has 32 of these, and first grade has 16. And what they tried to do is like the first half of the year, they still use the big books, and then they transition into a heavier textbook to get them ready for second grade, which is also the textbook. All the way through kindergarten, they will use the big book model, and the students have actually a matching little one that they hold in their laps. So those are the actual materials, what they would look like. Some of the highlights, we have, it follows a teach and model framework, which the teachers really liked. So there's a lot of building background knowledge, teaching and modeling built into the lesson plans. There's a very clear scope and sequence of the skills and strategies. The lessons focus on close reading of complex texts, which for little people is kind of hard to find really complex texts for them to kind of pick apart and delve into and develop those higher-order thinking skills. The activities in them also identify text evidence, which is a big thing when you hit the upper grades, when you're looking at assessments, being able to support your answers. And they bring it down to the primary grades in the series. Listening and speaking and writing and grammar are also Common Core standards, and they're totally connected and integrated as the students go through these stories. So definitely highlights that the committee liked when they were looking at this material. Here's some pictures of some of the products. One of the things... My glasses on here. One of the things that was very popular is that there's just a wealth of literature and nonfiction. It's 50/50, so, which is kind of unusual. I have 50% nonfiction in kindergarten, first, and second grade. There's texts for teachers to teach and model. There's a thing called the Reading Writing Workshop, where the teachers actually use that book with the students to teach and model and to do collaborative work first. And then there's a second book, the anthology, that the kids actually can go back to their seats in and practice what they just learned with a different story that matches up. They really like that component, and they're different sizes. So like they have the smaller Reading Writing Workshop book down on the carpet with them when they're sitting there, working with them, and then their anthology can be back at their desk when they go back and practice. Then there's also lots of materials for differentiation, and also materials for assessment. There is definitely research-based best practices built in. We have a gradual release model that's called the I Do, We Do, You Do model, which is I do first, where the teacher actually teaches and models what they're doing. And then we do, where the kids get to practice together, bringing in that cooperative learning and collaboration and lots of discussion and engagement. And then the You Do is where they actually show whether they have it or not in their own guided practice. And this is a strategy that Kathy Baumgartner pushes, which a lot of the Title I schools really liked, because you may know that she's had a lot of staff development with them through the past few years. So many of the strategies in this series align to things that they're doing. All the essential elements of literary instruction were built in. There's explicit strategy instruction for summarizing, predicting, drawing inferences, which is really hard for all elementary kids, but to pull that into primary, we thought was really rigorous for them. And then monitoring their comprehension, and actually, there's ways of reteaching for misunderstandings. Lots of collaborative conversations that they talked about, and this gradual release model. Connected text, there's an anchor text each week, and then there's paired passages, which is something that our old series didn't have, so that kids can actually do comparisons. An example might be The Three Little Pigs. Many of you may know there's different versions of that. So there's the main Three Little Pigs text, and then later on, there could be the other versions, and the kids compare and look for the differences in the story. And then lots of accessible level text. And this was a huge, a huge piece of this program that our teachers really liked. And this is why, when you look at their level text, you notice, these are all for different reading groups. But what you notice is that they're all the same cover. But the story is written in a way that it's the same content, but it's written at the different reading levels for your approaching on and above-level kids. When children are little and they're trying to develop their own self-esteem, this was crucial. Our teachers really felt that this was a great thing. And it's really the only program that we saw this in, where they would all be able to discuss and read the same book, the same story, the same text, look the same, but be able to do it at their level. In the Reading Writing Workshop, writing is connected. Kids write every day in this program. And what's really neat about it is it shows them first the how-to-do-it. It breaks it down for them. This is second grade. This is second grade model. And then it shows them exactly a model, like where a child had already written it. And then down at the bottom will say, your turn. So then they go, and they get to, so they've gotten to see what it looks like, talked about it with their friends, and then they get to go and practice on their own. So scaffolding and bringing, building those supports in is built into the series, which the teachers really liked. Everything that's in print is also digital. So I'm glad to hear that that fan is gonna be extended, because we're gonna be using a lot of it if you approve this series. They have, these are all the things that, for children, for them to be able to do, they get a my-to-do list. So a teacher can go on and assign assignments and assessments for them, kind of pick different items and create. So like if a child goes to a computer, and they put their ID in, their list of my-to-do things will come up. The reading books, a teacher, they can go to a certain level or a certain color, and all the books that they can have access to, and I think there's like over 6,000 titles that they can pick to online. Now, the leveled readers, they'll get sets of six and for 30, like there's 30 titles. But online, they have thousands of books that they can access. This is really cool. Then there's ways that they can practice. So if they're doing like a daily five approach, and the kids go around to centers, they can work on vocabulary, play interactive games. There's activities that they can do at home. They can access this from home. And there's also a way for teachers to provide messages to parents through this program, as far as what they're working on in school, and different activities to support it at home. So it's a great platform, and it's really easy, too. So they get like a picture of like a goose, and then there's little buttons around it. So if they want to go to my-to-do list, there's a little icon, and they just push the button, and it comes up on the screen. So it's very simple for our little people. The digital resources for teachers are endless. One of the things that I really liked is on each lesson in the lesson plan book, there's a little logo at the bottom that shows where they can go to get professional development on how to teach this lesson. So it's actually modeled for them. It's explained to them. So for our new teachers, and for teachers who may just want to make sure they're doing it right, it's a great ongoing professional development. it right, it's a great ongoing professional development that they'll have access to. They can customize lesson plans so that they can, you know, a lot of times we write in our lesson plan books, they can actually do it online and save them from year to year and just pull, drop and drag the components that they want. Lots of presentation tools and instructions, so video clips, any anchored charts, things like that that they want, they can pull right to their smartboard when they're doing their instruction. They can manage assignments, online scoring, again, the messenger and activities, and I talked about the professional development. So as much as there is for students, there's just as much for teachers. So our hope is, pending your approval, we have been able to negotiate 20 days of professional development for our teachers and we already have tentatively lined up, August 30th to be an introduction for them with consultants and then September 22nd, which is that fair day, to really delve into the technology resources, because that takes a little bit longer to, to learn what's there for them and available. And then we'll have many additional days for quarterly presentations and support as needed. So that's pretty exciting too. So the cost, this is what the cost for adopting McGraw-Hill Wonders will be for kindergarten through second grade. The bottom line is $615,111.84 for, and that includes the student textbooks, the materials, the teacher resources and access to the online digital resources for six years. And that's for all of our teachers, including our special education teachers and materials for each, each child in kindergarten first and second grade. So with that, I'm hoping and I'm asking for your recommendation and approval of this agenda item as presented.
I had one question. You were talking about earlier how students can access the digital resources from home?
Yes.
Would the books themselves stay at school or would the teacher be able to give them for home as well?
Our hope would they be able to stay at school and the reason is because any leveled reader or the text is all accessible online.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Okay, to play off of kind of what Roma was saying is, is there, is there a hard copy that if the student does not have access to internet, that they would be, they would have that resource available to be able to take home?
Yes, I'm sure that that would be a school-based decision, but they're rebuilt in extra in the, for every school, so that there would be those, they will be assigned to kids, you know? So I think it'll be up to the teacher to keep up with that. Our, our hope is, we certainly want them to have access from home, but we also want to make sure that we don't lose them and have to repurchase them. So it'd be something that the teacher could let the child take it home and just make sure it comes back.
No, is there time given during the school day? Because I'm going to tell you that our internet access where I live is very poor. So for me to try to, it, it just spins and takes forever to download something, it would be very frustrating. So that's why I'm asking if there is like a resource for students that are in that situation, whether they have, they might not have a computer or have internet issues, that they would have access to a hard copy so that they can keep up with whatever's going on.
We'll have hard copies of everything and it'll be handled just like any other textbook where kids don't have access, that the teachers work that out with their home. Any of the workbook pages, anything like that, all can be printed, so they certainly can be printed and sent home in a little booklet or, but it'll be handled just like any other textbook would be handled.
Okay, and I do like how you went through the process, just like the other people did when they were buying like a, you know, the French book or Spanish or, you know, the different lang, German, different languages and, and you know, the other, other textbooks where you got a variety of people that were interested, you know, staff members, community members, parents that had an interest in making this decision. I think that's really good because now, then you know that you've gotten really the best and you've had different, different input, you know, from different views, you know, making this decision. I also like that you've already planned out your professional days to make sure that you're going to, you know, get these, you know, get these things done, you've already looked into that. And I did have some questions on some of the, the information that you provided for the board. They did bring all these wonderful things and let us see them in the back. We have this, the week, let's say, this is for grade two, the weekly practice. So now does each student get one of these or does the teacher make a copy or is this online that the teacher makes a copy? It's a weekly practice, your turn, practice on level.
Right. And there are consumables, we're using the consumables more as a resource though, because in the little grades, we, younger grades, we find that they just don't use all of them. And so the pages that they select to use, they can just go online and print it.
Okay, so each student's not getting one then?
Right, there'll be one for them to look at, but not to write in.
Okay. And then this, this close reading companion, I wasn't sure if this was a write-in or if this is just for, you know, because it kind of looks in a way that the student would write in it, it's a...
Right, that's one of the consumables I was just talking about. So they'll be able to have that at their desk, but they'll actually write on whatever worksheet the teacher wants them to do that's printed on a separate sheet of paper.
Okay.
Just because of the cost to purchase that for, they're about eight dollars, eight to nine dollars a book. So we just thought, because a lot of it, there's not a lot of writing in it, there's a lot of like colorful pictures and reading, that if there's a Venn diagram that they are to fill out, instead of writing in the book, we can give them a Venn diagram to fill out.
Okay, so that's where like this part comes in or they, online?
Right.
And then I did see that there was, and I did like this, and this is to kind of show everyone, where they have the high, the frequency word so that the teacher has...
For the word wall.
There we go. So I, I do like that, there's a lot of pretty neat little goodies in there for the teachers for their resources and so that they're not having to sit and, you know, write up, it's, it's right here for them to put up on the word wall, so.
There's also a package, like you can use those for like stations, so like they're already, you know, the materials are there for them to develop stations for them, so it's...
Yeah, there was, yeah, there's workstation activity cards, so. I was so excited, I wanted to open everything up, but. But it's, and the books, you know, are, this is the reading/writing one, it does have about the vocabulary, there was a literature book also that went with it. They also had the small books and you answered the question on that, the, there were some very thin books, tiny books in there, it was like one story. So that's I guess at the different levels, okay? So, because I was going to ask about that, but they have highlighted words, that would be your high-frequency word. So, but yeah, looks like a very well worth purchase and that you've put a lot of effort into researching, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
I wanted to go back to the differentiation with leveled readers that you were presenting. Essentially, depending on the grade level, you're trying to get the same message across and I, I thought this was presented very well. My question is, do you have any data or any type of measurement to see how effective each of these different options that you're giving to your students? How effective are they?
You're talking about the titles of the...
These are, this is all within the same grade, so.
Yeah, I understand that. I understand that. My question is, is do you have any measurement tools to determine between these four different options? Are these kids understanding, you know, the subject matter, so on and so forth? Because on the first one, it's very, very simple verbiage, if you will, and then at higher, higher grade levels, it's more complicated.
But it's not grade levels.
It's not grade levels?
It's not grade levels.
So within one classroom, you'll have children that are broken up on this approaching, on the online and beyond.
I see.
So I think, and that, that was going to be my point, that, right, I mean, it's really good because when the kids break up into their reading groups, they all look, I mean, and they all know who's on what, you know, who's in what group, so to speak, because they all have different books and, you know, who's reading a chapter book and this kid isn't reading a chapter book. So this with them all having the same cover, I think is a fabulous idea.
I think it is too.
So these are all for first grade and then when the teacher pulls, say, six children back to her to work, because usually they'll do a whole group lesson and then you want to really work with children on their reading level.
That was my point.
Right, so what this, so other assessments will build into teachers determining what level the children are on and then they'll be grouped so that when they are working in these books, they'll be reading more at their level so that they can continue to grow in their independent reading.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Thank you for answering my question.
I'll go put something else, Jim, I went with Kelly Hall last year and it was to Carver and they have this, they have the baskets and it's all, let's say, let's say on snakes or, you know, so it's the same information, but just like this.
Differentiated.
You know, and so the student knows to go to the red basket because that's where they are, but they can enjoy that book with the same type of information, you know? And then I know that she was telling me then they, you know, after they're assessed, they sit with the teacher and they're assessed and the teacher says, okay, now you're ready to move on to like the blue basket. So, you know, it's the same content, but, you know.
Presented differently.
Yeah.
And children will move within these groups, they're not set, it's fluid as they advance, they may jump to a different level, but the goal is, is for them all to feel successful in their reading and be on the same page, even though the actual text is differentiated for them.
And the, the teacher then makes the discretion on who gets what book?
Yes.
Okay. That was really what I was getting at.
Yes. Thank you. I think the two things I liked were the, what Jim was just talking about with the different, you know, the whole, the whole same cover thing is just a great idea, I mean, that's phenomenal, especially, and I agree, for the kids and their self-esteem and, you know, not, you know, you don't have all that side discussion. And then the other thing was the point about bringing in the nonfiction text as well. You have some students that just, you know, they, they enjoy that, you know, and I know that there's a lot of transitional, whatever, whatever the teacher term is for it, like all the I Survived books, you know, where it's a fictional book, but yet it's based on historical, historical fiction. And I think those are very popular, especially in, you know, the, for, you know, second and third grade realm. So, you know, having them be able to read true nonfiction, but yet, you know, then when they go into their different reading groups, to still have those available in the classroom, I think, you know, that's a, that's a great tool as well, so.
Thank you.
So it seems like these will kind of fit with a lot of the mainstream books and textbooks that the children are reading in the classroom, you know, on their own or at the library, so.
Yes.
Very good. All the comments made by the board members are good, so I won't repeat them at the same time. Thank you for including a variety of people on your committee. You had many meetings, you had a scientific approach on which ones to choose. I like the idea to customize lesson plans that the teachers can use. It used to be just, let me figure it out on my own and pull what I have and go to other teachers. You can have a wider variety of resources when you can go online and get them. So this is very, very good. It's like students that get free lunch, when they put in the code, nobody knows. So with the text, with the same cover, same cover book, but it's different, you know, levels of reading instruction. And the student won't feel singled out or feel insecure that I'm reading on a lower level than another student. So you did a wonderful job and thank you very much.
I think quite simply put, it's differentiated instruction in yet another form, the opportunity to reach children where they are without having to layer on all of the social subtext of what's this person doing versus what I'm doing. They really focus on the reading, getting stronger and more practiced in their reading and the more they practice, the more comfortable they are with that, the faster they're going to move along to higher levels. I think it's that, it's that repetition, it's learning to be comfortable with what you're doing and, and enjoying a success that you build on that success. And I, I really like that about this program that you've presented, the fact that you've brought parents in and such a diverse group and given teachers the opportunity to view the, the various options and what makes the most sense. And that we're now finally in a position where we can put this throughout all the schools so that once again, in, especially in our schools that are, have highly mobile populations where they're moving within several schools, the fact that they're going to see the same materials no matter which school they're in, I think is also really important. And it's that equity across that I, that also really appeals to me. So I'm very grateful that this has been put into the budget and that we're able to accomplish this at this time, so.
Me too, thank you.
And for the one piece that, to build on that, Mrs. Allen, we have great teachers who are already doing this work. They're doing the I, we, you, they're, they're differentiating instruction, but they've, they've been left to their own devices to kind of gather together those resources and they've been incredibly creative and we've had wonderful professional development in working through all of this, but with your approval of, of this particular purchase, we're consistently providing those resources to all of our teachers and it really just kind of reinforces instructionally what we, what we have been doing. And I think that that's, it's a testament to all of you, you know, we're going to have spent almost $2 million to, to update our instructional resources this year alone and I just, I applaud you for it, I thank you very much for it and I think our teachers this summer with their professional development. Mrs. Kacke was presenting to Maureen and, and me last night and we, we wanted to play with all the res, we wanted to rip all this elephant off, we wanted to get to all the cards, we were opening, we were looking at the big books, we were, you know, and if, if you can engender that enthusiasm from a man such as, you know, older gentleman such as myself.
Who likes poetry.
That's, yeah, who likes, well, who likes poetry, right?
Oh my gosh, there's poetry in there too.
But that really, that really is fantastic and that speaks, that speaks to the engagement of the resources, so just, just thank you very much.
Okay, anyone have anything else? Okay. All right, I have a motion for this action item.
I move that the Board of Education approve the adoption of the primary reading language arts textbook and instructional materials from McGraw-Hill as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Proved? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right, board member time. Anyone have anything else they would like to add on anything?
Nope.
No.
Jim, Mary.
No.
Kathy. I just really appreciate that the, we were able to take the staff recognition and do it in a meaningful way at Chopticon. I think celebrating in that way really lets staff know that we so much appreciate what they're doing and I look forward to this evening's celebration with all of our students and their families. I've already heard from different folks who will be there this evening and how excited they are. The fact that we're not having to cram everybody into this small space and shift people out.
Kathy, you're stealing my agenda item!
Sorry!
Just finish, tell them the time, the date.
Nope, you got it.
No, keep going, you got it.
I appreciate it.
I don't want to talk.
Six o'clock this evening, Chopticon High School, be there.
We have over 500 RSVPs.
Right.
It's a good thing the auditorium seats approximately 800 people.
Well, this, this auditorium comfortably seats 550. So we're going to be, we're going to be a little, we're going to be a little closer, it's going to be great, but we're also going to be streaming it live in HD from our website. So in the event that you cannot make it...
The cameras that show have the same lighting.
And we have, we've balanced our cameras, we're going to actually three-camera shoot and if you can't watch it live, we will also then render out the HD video and have it probably posted by Thursday or Friday, they're very big files.
So, and I will apologize, I will be there, but I will step out early. I'm going to turn my comments over to Roma, since she's our student member and it is truly a student event. I have mom duty for my own daughter at Margaret Brent Middle School this evening at seven, so I'm going to have to dash out, so.
Got it.
She's like, are you going to be late? I'm like, no! So, have to make sure I'm on time.
Yes.
Very important.
All right, and with that, so Kathy has updated everyone. Tonight, Chopticon High School, student recognition.
Yes.
All right. We will start promptly at six since I have to leave, so.
We will start at six, yes.
I don't know, because you know it's all about me. All right, next board meeting is Wednesday, June 14th, after graduations, after schooling. school is ended. Da, 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 uh, so.
Yes.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.